It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the August 14, 2018 College Place City Council meeting to order. We can all please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to give our allegiance?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that we have. We ask that you would be here with our meeting and help us to make the decisions according to your will. And again, Father, we thank you in Jesus' name for the wonderful staff we have. Amen.
Amen.
It's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, if you step forward in the microphone and state your name and address? Seeing no one, we force the consent agenda, approving the agenda for this evening, approving the council minutes for July 24th, approving the workshop, the council workshop minutes of August 7th, and this consent agenda.
We move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, it's her second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say a sign. Motion passes unanimously. On the presentations this evening, first is recognition of the yard of the month. Chief Tomars.
Good evening. So, the July Yard of the Month goes to the Edwards family, and they live at 115 Northwest B Street. And it's very cool, it was nominated by a member of our C O R S department, and sure enough, they're well deserving of the award. They've been in the community for a long, long time, and they're really excited to receive it.
Any questions for Chief Tomars?
Great.
This evening, we are privileged to have Dr. Tom Underhill here, who is the medical director for the Wallowa County Emergency Medical Services, and a good friend in personal acquaintance. So, Tom, thank you for coming. We've asked Dr. Underhill here to kind of talk about what emergency medical services needs for the county, and see if there's any questions that you may have as we move forward on how the city is going to continue to deliver those services in the future. With that, no agenda, Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Tom Underhill, I've been M P for about 12 years at the county. I was E R Director, C M O at General Hospital.
Chief Medical.
I got it, I got it. I forgot you left here later.
And, yes. With the change of life, and progression, and growth, and continued increasing popular use of pre-hospital health services, change is inevitable. When I took the job over, there was one transporting agency in the entire county, City Wallowa, City Fire. They were very defensive about picking up anybody who called 911 within a time limit and transporting them. And they did a brilliant job, and they have still done a brilliant job. And I want to make sure everybody knows that, that the quality of healthcare in this county, I will stand up against anybody, whatever matrix we measure on, whether it's IVs, whether it's notification of trauma, whether it's cardiac activations, Wallowa County is doing a great job. But, as we needed more time, and as it became more and more difficult for the city employees to go to the whole county, first it was District 5, Burbank, started transporting. And they started with paramedics under a B L S license, and were treating up, and have moved into an A L S license, and pretty well take care of the west side of the county. They come about to Fish Hook, about to the west side of Nine Mile Hill, there's some joint agreements in District 6 there where they all cover, and they've done also a very good job standing up to the standard that this county has had forever. Following this, last year, District 4 began transporting on B L S license, B L S transports, with the plan of moving to A L S. And District 4 was planning on moving to transport their own patients, when a District 4 patient calls, they go. And the conversation with College Place remains, how are we going to do this? It is my role as M P to not offer you advice on whether or not you do this. It is not my job to offer whether or not you go A L S or B L S, it is to answer questions. I am fully supportive of College Place transporting patients, I think you should. You have excellent pre-hospital personnel. They get there before the city guys get there. And for a vast majority of your patients, they can transport them faster to the emergency room than the city can. That's simply maps, that's geography, they get there faster from this station than they do from Station 1 or Station 2 in the city. I've been asked to comment about the difference between paramedics and E M Ts. There is a hierarchy perceived within pre-hospital healthcare between these two systems. An E M T is a long and arduous, but one-quarter class we teach here at Community College. With ongoing training that is required, that lets you transport patients, you become an E M T, you get national license, you get state license, then you can take care of patients. We have B L S protocols within Wallowa, and these are very standard across the state. The state legislates what E M Ts can do. Broadly, grossly speaking, they do not administer medications. They do CPR, meaning the A E Bs, whack? Yes. They do hands-on chest compressions, bag ventilation. And most importantly, they administer what I like to say is a diesel drip, meaning they pick the patient up from where the patient is and they get them to the emergency room. Paramedics is a two-year course. Obviously, a lot more time involved. They administer drugs. They put tubes down people's throats, they do IVs. E M Ts don't do this. The drugs we use in Wallowa are very simple compared to some places, some counties in this, and what a paramedic can administer pre-hospital is determined by the M P D of that county. So Benton Franklin County to the west of us has 75 drugs on their protocols? I don't know the number, but it's a lot. How many do we have there?
We have about one.
Okay. So we have a little more than half of that. And my job over the last 10 years has been to cut that number down as far as we can. And I've always taken the point that, is this drug beneficial? Is it cost-effective? And is it worthwhile? I mean, we can create scenarios. There's a bus with pregnant women who get anthrax and radioactive, and you know, you can create these pictures, we do this in the EMS world, we get all excited. But you have to keep it pretty reasonable. We have drugs that every ambulance out of the city carries that has been administered one time in the last 12 years. But also, I can't in good faith get rid of that, because the one time we gave it, it probably saved a man's life. This is a medicine you give to stop bleeding after delivery. And as we're having more and more moms delivering, this one was delivering in the snowstorm at the other end of Mill Creek. Okay, and we can get into the details. But I try to simplify that. I try to take more medicines out of the ambulance because of cost. Data is where we have to stand on our practice of healthcare, whether in pre-hospital or in the emergency room. When I went to med school, one of my mentors was very articulate, and he said, "Half of what we're teaching you is wrong, and we're not sure which 50 percent it is." That has borne out true over my 20 years of being an E R physician. Every five years it cycles. You give this, you don't give this. You give this, you don't give this. And we are really quite diligent to try to figure out, does it work or not? So the presumption that somebody is laying on the ground dialing 911 in trouble, and the advanced paramedics show up and do what they do, and do very, very well, we presume that patient will survive this event better than if an E M T shows up and basically picks him up, puts an ambulance around to the ER. So is it a stay and play, you get the medicines into him, get the IV intubate him, do everything in the field, or is it scoot him up and run to the hospital? We like to believe that paramedicine is better. And data continues to suggest otherwise. There's very little, if any, quality data that supports paramedicine, any of the medicines in paramedicine, over given to the E R. When you look at the outcome of, is the patient surviving this event, whether it's a cardiac, whether it's a heart attack, whether it's birth, whatever, whatever you do, I'm a believer. That's uncomfortable, and I don't like that statement, because I want to believe that what we do, what we train so hard on makes a big difference. Doesn't, particularly on shorter transport times. So, paramedics, A L S, have more supplies, they have more cost, they have more drugs. And our medics in this town do a spot-on brilliant job. They have a much broader understanding of what they're treating, and I like that. Does it make patients survive the reason they called 911 more? I want to say yes, and I cannot, based on the data, and there was a great study in JAMA just this spring, that again said, there is no particular level of paramedicine that's proven better than B L S. I personally counter that data if we think about longer transports. Because truly, if somebody is wadded up out in North County, and we can't fly helicopter to them, yes, we've got 45, 60 minutes to get him into town, yes, the golden hour of trauma, absolutely, IV fluids, I want to believe that makes a big difference. The data maybe in some subsets suggests that. For College Place, where your average transport time is going to be seven minutes if you're coming from the west side of town, and from where most of your nursing homes are, which is where the vast majority of your calls come from, is what, three minutes to the hospital? It's a valid thing to think about. So, I submitted a letter, this is a funny time for a conversation, I submitted a letter of resignation last month. So I will be no longer in this chair by the start of next year, hopefully by November Anything I can do to maintain the quality of pre-hospital healthcare between now and then, you got me. Absolutely, I will do, I will answer any question I can. Any way I can help this. David Winters, great job, how many times in Harvey, and I always call him about weird bugs and bites, it's very cool. And so, as you guys move forward, I think it is brilliant that you transport patients. I think it is appropriate, I would love to see you transport patients, I think you should from a county perspective. You have the people, you have the space, you have the equipment, you have the protocols, you have the dispatch. It's in place. Just got to do it. You got the training, you've got the support from the EMS office, you got to do it. Politically, it's always a challenge. The Myron Rift exists, we know this. And so, I don't mean to minimize that, but I still think for the citizens of College Place, and collectively as the county exists, I am very supportive of College Place transporting patients. Whether you choose to go A L S or B L S, that is up to you, and it is a valid and reasonable argument that you can defend either side. Any questions?
Questions for Dr. Underhill?
I have one.
Ms. Knight?
If the area had a major, major casualty, since Wallowa General Hospital is closed, do we have enough facilities to handle it?
You can always present the picture where, no, we do not have the ability. The Horizon Air crashes into the Sweet Stadium, I mean, that's what possible. Of course, we can present pictures where there's 152 casualties. Not possible. St. Mary's has done a brilliant job of staffing. They have credentialed hundreds of people, dozens of doctors, they've done a great job. But no, I mean, anytime, anyplace, you could have situations that overrun what you have. What is that absolute number? I don't know. I will tell you that the region has a trauma response plan. About five years ago, a bus of tourists went down, went off Cabbage Hill, I don't remember if you remember that, outside of Pendleton, East Pendleton. They tumbled down, there was a bunch of fatalities, there was 30, 40, 50 people. Pendleton's a small hospital. Wallowa General got several of those patients, St. Mary's got several of those patients, and that's over a state line. So if the unthinkable happens, we have the tri-cities hospitals who play with us. And the command of the scene would take charge to distribute those patients. Hopefully, the sickest, the most critically injured, sick, exposed, whatever, would come with the closest E R. And then the less sick through the triage system would be dispersed into the region. And there are systems in every hospital to true love. I mean, there are systems where, okay, call the trauma activation, and we call the pediatricians, we call the urologists, we call every surgeon in town, we call the orthopaths, who's here to respond now? And so, yes, there are, and I've seen it in this town over and over and over, where people who are not on call rally when it's needed. We've had small events where three people got stuck with knives in one night, and one of our urologists, who was not on call, came in and admitted a patient because they had a stab wound to the kidney. Are you kidding me? I was totally competent, but this is a trauma, the surgeons deal with that. No, 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 this is, I mean, our medical staff is unique. It's exceptional at how well they rally as a whole to take care. So, it's pretty cool.
Other questions? Mr. Cleveland?
You were mentioning that treatment outcomes for A L S and B L S transportation don't seem to differ much, except for in cases of distance potentially?
Potentially.
Are there other, any other like significant differences that have potentially or been confirmed?
It's not consistent on that. As a matter of fact, with sudden cardiac arrest, this is, over the last five years, sudden cardiac arrest and CPR have become, it was the biggest. I mean, I don't know, I assume all of you are CPR performers, you should be. In Seattle, Seattle Medical One, downtown Seattle, if you go down with a heart attack, paramedics do not respond to you. Because E M Ts have well-defined outcome data supporting better outcomes with E M Ts doing CPR, because paramedics show up and put chest tubes, or put breathing tubes in and put IVs in, which has no proven benefit, whereas chest compressions and shocking has very good benefits. And so, E M Ts do the CPR in Seattle, which is counterintuitive. You would think that, you know, breathing and all this other stuff seems important. And I want it to be important, truly, because it is an important skill, but the data does not support that. And in many places, there is data that says exactly the opposite. The longer you stay and play in the field, the worse they are. But it's hard, how do you compare, you know, a thousand paramedic responses, you know, because they bias out, sicker patients have paramedics, so is that why their outcome data's worse?
Apples and oranges.
Yes. And yet, you have to make, you have to make a guess. And so, I want everybody to understand that I am entirely supportive of our A L S system, and we are outstanding. We have first, our paramedics intubate people in the field 86 percent of the time successfully. That is unbelievable. I mean, that's better than most ERs do. So that's whether they're upside down in the car, that's, I mean, it's, kudos. So, other questions?
Tom, thank you so much for taking time off of your, I think you've just come off of 312s working all night.
Not a problem, I'm waking up this morning now. So again, if you guys have questions, Heather's got my contact, I will answer any of them coming up. And I don't, I don't want to play the political game. I want to stand on the box of medicine, I want to stand on the box of pre-hospital healthcare for this, for this county. That's what I am paid to do. And these are good people doing good things for our citizens. And so, as you choose, I will support. And that is your choice tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
So, Mr. Lucipello, I understand we have a presentation from Mr. Clemmons of Pacific Power.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Quamons is here to talk about the Relight Washington Grant Program, because if this body approves a contract with Pacific Power a little bit later at this meeting, we'll actually be proceeding a house with implementation on this. So, with that, Bill.
Thanks, Mike. Mayor, for the council, why am I excited to be here today? When I first heard about this project, City Power's an associate member of the Association of Washington City, so I'm always at their annual meeting. And a couple of years ago, in Manche, T I B was there, and one of the sessions was on this program, Relight Washington. And I sat and listened to the programming law. Wow, this would be a great program for our communities that we serve. So, I was always excited, got back to the office, and then I started digging into it. And Pacific Power is regulated by the State Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, so all our pricing, all our fees, everything is regulated by the state. And when I first started digging into it, the way our tariffs were set up, there was very little savings there to justify doing this. T I B requires a 30 to 40 percent savings to the city to be able to fund this. So, we were discouraged, but I started digging in, and started picking away at roadblocks. We had to go back to the commission three different times to get our tariff changed. So, we finally got through that process, and if you ever went to the commission meeting, those aren't the easiest things to get done. But we got it done. And then, when we looked at it, it made no sense for us to try to do this internally. There's the amount of work that's done, there's about, I think there's 18 communities in our service territory that want to do this program. College Place was one of the first ones at the table, so we're trying to get this kicked off with College Place, Dayton, and Grand Doisie. Also, the first three communities are really showing an interest in this. So, we got the tariff changed, figured out it would be easier to contract this work out, that way we'd bring a contractor in, they could go wipe out one community, move to the next community, just focus on, not like...
I prefer complete.
...the next one. So, that was the plan, and that was kind of exciting, because we had to keep the prices down to make sure this stayed cost-effective for the city. So, we really put pressure on the contractors to sharpen their pencil, and really take a look at how we can do this and still make it cost-effective for the community. So, in the end, I think we've come up with a really good program. Mike's been through this in his previous job, so he knows the value of it to the community, where between our energy efficiency program and S A N A, which is $10,103.40, and the savings the city will see on their monthly bills annually of just under $12,000, we were able to get an agreement between the city of College Place and T I B. So, we have one last step before we can order lights, and I'd like to do that tomorrow. And this one last piece would be the contract between Pacific Power and the city. And the way the contract is set up, we've got a real tight timeframe on payment to Pacific Power, but we've worked with T I B to where when we invoice the city, we will copy the T I B, and they will cut a check immediately for the amount they're going to reimburse the city for. So, there won't be any delay there. There'll be a slight delay in money for the energy efficiency incentive. It takes about 30 days for the time the project is completed before that check is cut, so there's a little bit of a lag of time there. So, you know, provided light contract, it's a fairly simple contract, so I'm here to answer any questions, and hopefully we can enjoy the process.
Questions for Mr. Clemmons?
He wanted us to ask really difficult ones. You go ahead.
No, this really isn't about the contract, the building. A question about LED lights. I read through the article, do they contribute less to what I would call light pollution than other forms of light, the high-pressure sodium, or is it more related to the fixture they're in, or what are your thoughts on that generally?
It's more related to the fixture. And the kind of fixtures we use are, I can't remember the term, but it's, they're made specifically to reduce that kind of light pollution, if you want to call that, kind of like what you guys did on College Town. So, that's definitely the kind of fixtures we'll be using.
For this installation, yeah. Okay, thank you.
One thing I forgot to mention is, LED lights are currently P P N L's default light, so if our light fails in College Place, we'll replace it with LED. Wait for them all to fail, get them all switched out, we'll be here 30 weeks later, so maybe the last one gets hot, so that's what's really exciting, and then we'll have consistent light throughout the process.
Thanks.
Mr. Stumpy?
I just really appreciate you pushing this so hard, because these kinds of projects are great, but without somebody pushing it, they never happen, so thank you.
You're welcome. Like I said, I saw this right off the bat, it's something really good for the community. I really commend T I B for stuff I've been doing.
I got nothing, I'm sorry. Read about it, what else?
Thank you, Bill, we really appreciate your time, and we will be dealing with contracts here shortly.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And, Mr. Hartwig?
That won't take very long, because I'm going to turn it over. But, council authorized mayor to execute a contract to do the southwest area sewer plan and study. We have, we have done a lot of the work, J U B is our contract engineering firm for that. And so, Alex Fazari is here to present on it.
Good evening.
Good evening, Alex.
As Paul mentioned, my name's Alex Fazari, I'm a professional engineer and project manager with J U B Engineering, at our Kenan Mc Office. And I'll be talking about the southwest sewer plan. It's a subject that probably isn't as exciting as some of the ones we've heard about today. It's exciting to me, but I find it as exciting as I can.
Don't you say this is not exciting.
So first of all, the driver for this sewer plan study, this exhibit right here is intended to show you the extents of your current sanitary sewer collection system. The light green pipes right there represent your current sewer collection system. Everything flows based on the topography from east towards west, towards your treatment plant. There's a main trunk line, sorry, not very steady there, right here. So everything drains this direction towards the main trunk line and towards your treatment plant. Based on the topography, any future development down in the south or southwest part of the city will likely require pump stations. And so, that was the main driver for this study, was because that's the area of imminent growth in the city, we wanted to take a look at the collection system to serve that area. And because it's going to require some pump stations, it makes sense to take a real long, a long-term approach. So when we look at sewer master plans, we recommend planning for up to 50 years of growth. Because with modern construction materials and modern construction methods, the pipes that we install nowadays, we expect to last 50 years. So we want to make sure they're big enough to serve 50 years and deep enough to serve 50 years. In poorly planned sewer collection systems tend to have a lot of pump stations, because with each development, they put a new pump station in. But if we take a long, a long-term look, we can make sure we strategically locate those pump stations and minimize those pump stations, because each pump station requires a lot of operations and maintenance. Thus, one of the main drivers for studies like this is to try and take a long-term look and strategically locate such pump stations, and also make sure that the pipes that we install are large enough and deep enough to serve a lot of growth for the future. And so, the staff commissioned the study, recognizing the need to take a long-term look, I think shows a lot of wisdom on your staff's part, so this is a good study. Just a quick overview of the schedule, so the city advertised for proposals earlier this year, the J U B team was selected in March. We initially started by looking at what the sewer demands for the build-out area would be. We had a meeting with some of the stakeholders in April, and then we commenced on developing a hydraulic model for the sewer collection system to help us decide the alignments of the pipes and the depths and the sizes. We presented a draft of our master plan... The basic process is outlined here on these bullet points, so first, we want to identify the planned land uses for the study area. That then helps us calculate what the sewer demands will be as that area builds out into the future. And again, we develop a hydraulic model for the collection system. We generally try and have the pipes follow roadways and property lines. Sometimes it's difficult to, I'm not sure exactly how properties will develop in the future, and we make sure that we increase the pipe depths as necessary in order to eliminate pump stations, as I mentioned before. And again, we size it for a complete build-out of the 50-year boundary. This figure represents the study boundary that we looked at. So this red area is area of existing development that drains to an existing lift station located right there. And so you can see we looked at a fairly large study boundary, generally on the south side, so everything north of the Walla Walla River. But it's a pretty big study area that would likely represent about 50 years plus of growth, so it was a good boundary. And so through the hydraulic modeling effort and the demands that we calculated, this represents the basic master plan. So as part of the master plan, I mentioned we try and minimize lift stations. We're going to locate one regional lift station here on the very southwest, very west side of the Strange Basin. So everything will drain from east towards the west. And as part of this master plan, we'll be able to eliminate an existing lift station here and an existing lift station here. So we'll be able to eliminate two lift stations, replace it with one larger regional lift station. The orange color here is about a 15-inch diameter pipe, the yellow 12, green 10. So you can see the main trunk lines, and there'll be one area down here that drains towards, up to the south side of the lift station, and then this will be also another main trunk line that comes into the north side of the lift station. So this is the overall master plan, and this is just a planning level look, just to give you a big picture plan, so that as development occurs, you basically have a game plan to follow through the development of the collection system. And so finally, like I said, this was just a planning level effort. Of course, as development occurs is when you actually go through some more detailed design of the system, and the pace of development will basically dictate which projects are going to be developed first. But in order for any growth to happen at all in the southwest part of the city, at a minimum, we'll need to build this main regional lift station right here. And then this clouded area is what I've clouded as a likely first phase of this entire project, so it would include building this regional lift station. And we recommend that although the growth isn't likely to be built out for 50 years, there are certain parts of the infrastructure we like to size early on. So for example, the electrical service to this lift station, we want to make sure it's sized for the 50-year growth, so we don't have to come back and redo the electrical service. So there are certain parts of the lift station, we'll make sure we size for build-out now, but we'll put smaller pumps and smaller pipes in the near term. And so the main sewer trunk that will gravity feed to this lift station, you can see, will run up through this proposed residential development. It would allow us to eliminate this existing lift station, and then extend a sewer pipe across the highway for some potential commercial growth on the other side of the highway. So this is just a likely first project that would come about from this study. And so the next steps for the city will likely be looking at property acquisition or easement acquisition for siding that lift station, easements for the main sewer trunk lines, and then discussing whether or not to pursue design, and also looking at funding options for this piece of infrastructure. So that's just a basic overview of our study. Like I said, we're working on our final deliverables now, and we're just about wrapped up with the study.
Questions for Mr. Fazari?
What sort of depth are you looking at at the pump station?
It'll be about 30 feet deep at the pump station.
That's not far enough.
Yeah.
This question may be out there, but you may not know the answer to this, and maybe there is not an answer to this. As conservation takes hold, what have you seen maybe historically, is it a linear growth as far as if you add 20% to your population, is there a 20% increase in waste, or with more efficient facilities and appliances and whatnot? Have you seen any impact of that over the years, or is it?
Not particularly. Really, the, our planning levels in terms of wastewater per person per day have stayed fairly steady. The real drivers for people's behavior tend to be the monthly rates, and so, you know, there isn't really a big driver for people to conserve water. Now, there are certainly more energy-efficient fixtures like washers and dryers and things like that, but we haven't seen a real noticeable difference in the drop-off. The one thing that will, that can improve for sure for a sewer collection system is as it ages, it tends to bring in a lot of groundwater, and that brings a lot of flow through the pipes, actually the treatment plant, we call that infiltration and inflow. And so identifying those spots where there's a lot of groundwater coming into the pipes and rehabilitating those, now those are, those are good projects for trying to reduce the amount of wastewater that you need to convey and ultimately treat.
Good, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fazari. You're not off the hook yet. Mr. Hartwig?
As I mentioned, I believe in the previous council meeting, a facility plan amendment has been submitted to ecology. They have made, I would consider minor comments. One of those is that we need to have a public meeting to allow the public to comment. This will, this will be the purpose of this meeting, and just to give you an update on ecology's concerns and where we are. So Alex.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So switching gears, we just talked about the sewer collection system, now we'll talk a little bit about the wastewater treatment plan, where it ultimately all goes. So the main driver for the facility plan, for the wastewater treatment plan, is the NPDES permit, and I caught on a bit of a sensitivity to acronym, so I'll make sure I mention it. This is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. Basically, this permit is regulated by the state, and what it's regulating is the quality of the water that you're discharging from your wastewater treatment plant into Garrison Creek. And so in this existing permit that you have, which expires coming February, there's this compliance schedule. And ultimately, this compliance schedule came from a study that was done on the Walla Walla River between 2004 and 2008. And the study on the Walla Walla River found some pollutants that needed to be cleaned up, and so as part of the agreement with EPA, they developed this compliance schedule for your wastewater treatment plant to come more into compliance with the water quality requirements for the Walla Walla River. So ultimately, that was the driver for this facility plan. You can see this April 2018, the facility plan needed to be submitted to ecology, and we did that. And as Paul mentioned, we got some comments back from Ecology Now. And then between 2018 and 2023, there will be land acquisition, design, and construction of the improvements that this facility plan has identified. And the goal is to have everything constructed by the end of 2023. So this is the compliance schedule. Just a real quick overview of our schedule so far, so the JUB team was selected in early 2017. We took about a year from the development of the facility plan, and we submitted it in April. As part of the development of the facility plan, we looked at various alternatives, which I'll go through some of those real briefly, but we then met with the Public Works Committee in February, submitted our draft to ecology in March. We received ecology comments not too long ago, and we're ready to submit the final plan to ecology for approval. And in terms of the timeline, for the design phase of improvements, there's a funding window coming up. It started, the window actually opened yesterday, and then it goes through the middle of October, and that would be funding for design through the State Department of Ecology. So a real driver was getting this facility plan approved by the state, so that you'd be eligible to apply for this funding coming up. So the basic process for the facility plan development was we first wanted to project the future flows and loads, so we looked at your potential needs for the next 20 years. Then we also met with the Washington Department of Ecology to try and identify what any future permit requirements might be. And the point of that was so that when we evaluate your existing facility, we can evaluate it relative to any future permit changes, as well as your future flows and loads. We had several workshops with your staff and with your operators at your treatment plant to discuss some of the deficiencies at the existing plants. Then we worked on evaluating several different alternatives for addressing those deficiencies, and ultimately selected the final alternative. So some of the deficiencies that we noted at your existing wastewater treatment plant are listed here in the bullet points. So the headworks, that's basically the very front of the plant where we screen out as much as we can, it's just equipment that's just aged and needs to be replaced. So everything was sized properly, it's just time for it to be replaced. The next three or four deal with biological treatment at the wastewater treatment plant. Your wastewater treatment plant utilizes sequencing batch reactors. They're basically tanks that fill up over time, and once the tanks are full, we add air to aerate them and do the biological treatment. Then we turn off the air and let them settle out, and then the effluent is decanted off the tops of the tanks. And so you have three of those tanks at your treatment plant right now, and they are performing adequately, although there are times of the day, especially when the loads are very high, that the operators are having, find it very challenging to operate that system. The aerators are undersized, the blowers are undersized, and they're just, they've aged, and so it's time to rehabilitate them as well. Influent equalization basin was something recognized as a need, just a wide spot in the road upstream of the sequencing batch reactors, just to provide some flexibility for the operators. This equalization basin downstream of the sequencing batch reactors is undersized, so it needs to be expanded, and because of that, the UV and disinfection system is also too small. The solids handling part of the treatment plant, it was recognized that there's a need to add some covered storage for the wintertime to help reduce the odors on the solids drying beds. And then also, there's a, there's a tank that provides some stabilization of the solids that's undersized and needs to be replaced as well. Both of those improvements at the solids handling will help improve the odors coming from the solids drying bed. And finally, the, probably the biggest deficiency from the eyes of ecology for sure is the land treatment site. Currently, you discharge water to Garrison Creek in the winter months, and then during the summer months, you land apply it to crops for beneficial use. The problem is in the spring and in the fall, there's not a lot of water need for those crops, and so there's not enough storage to hold that water. And you're technically not supposed to be discharging to the creek in the summer and the fall, but there's nowhere else for the water to go. And so that's one of the big deficiencies that we identified in the existing plan. So we looked at different alternatives to address these deficiencies. Now ecology wanted the alternatives to look at eliminating the discharge from Garrison Creek year-round. So as I mentioned, you currently discharge in the wintertime. They wanted you to look at if there were ways that you could eliminate any discharge to the creek year-round. And so these four alternatives were what we looked at for trying to deal with a whole year's worth of wastewater. Alternative one is basically expanding your existing system, so adding a whole bunch more ponds and storage, so that you could store all the water in the wintertime, and then land apply it in the summertime. Alternative number two, it was effluent reclamation. So that would involve treating the wastewater to a lot higher standards, so that it could meet requirements to be used as irrigation on playfields, parks, and is treated to a level that has enough disinfection so that it can come into contact with people and be okay. That's, that alternative was attractive in the sense that it would help offset your water demands for your water system, but the expense is just too great. You could see it was a pretty big price take for that alternative. The third option was reclamation to what we call Class A+. And so that's further treatment to then meet groundwater standards. This alternative was to add that treatment and then discharge it to a nearby irrigation canal. That was a, that is a good option, and the cost was, was not very high either. Option number four was the same level of treatment, Class A+, and then rapid infiltration into the groundwater system. As we were evaluating these alternatives, these bottom three right here have the name reclamation. And so in the state of Washington, when you evaluate reclamation options, it then triggers another criteria where you look at water rights impairment. And so basically, for the water that you're discharging to the creek now, if you decide to take that out of the creek and put it to beneficial use for these other uses, then you need to go through an evaluation to see if you're harming somebody else by taking the water out of the creek, who otherwise want to take it out downstream. As we met with ecology and talked about these options, it became clear that that was a big can of worms that we didn't want to open. The water rights issues can get to be hairy. And so for those, for that reason, we decided that that was a big strike against these bottom three alternatives. The water rights impairment is just a pretty big issue. And so the attractive thing about alternative number one is it's basically, you keep your existing permit, and you're still really doing reclamation in the fact that you're irrigating crop land. So you're really growing crops on land that otherwise doesn't have a water right. So in my mind, that's a good beneficial use of the water. The nice thing is you get to keep your existing permit, and you don't open up the water rights issues anymore. And so when we met with the Public Works Committee, we reviewed this, and the city staff and the Public Works Committee, all kind of came to the same conclusion that alternative one is really the best one to carry forward. The other nice thing about alternative one, in addition to avoiding the water rights impairment issue, is the ability to phase the improvements. And so rather than building storage and buying enough land where you can treat, store and treat a whole year's worth of water, we can, we can build just enough to make sure that you're only discharging in the wintertime periods. And then if ecology pushes further for you to get out of the creek, we then just expand it. But in the near term, the, it ends up being the least costly alternative, we just take the first step alone. In terms of the environmental impacts, again, you know, the effluent is put to beneficial use, it's used to grow crops that otherwise on land would not have water ads to be grown. It'll eliminate the discharge to Garrison Creek during the entire critical period, so entirely from April till October, you'll be either storing the water or applying it to crops. And then, as I mentioned, in terms of the solids handling, it'll reduce the odors at the solids handling facility. So there are a lot of good environmental impacts of this first alternative. So we developed a capital improvement plan. You can see here, we identified four phases of improvements. The first phase are the things you absolutely need to do in the near term to make ecology happy. Phase two are things that should be done, but they can be delayed a little bit further in the same for phase three. And you can, these first three phases are what we would consider to be the near-term improvements that need to be happening soon. Phase four will only be necessary if ecology tells you that you can't discharge to the creek even in the wintertime. Hopefully, that never happens. In reality, you think these first three phases are the ones to chase in the near term. Wanted to take a quick look at the approximate cost impact of this alternative in terms of the rate increases. So we worked with FCS Group, who you have contracted with to recently look at some sewer rate impacts, and we just wanted to get an idea of some scenarios. Now, you know, one of the next steps that are going to be important are looking at funding options, but we asked them just to look at one scenario. So one scenario would be if we apply for an ecology state revolving fund loan, which is a low-interest loan, I think, I think it's a 2% interest rate right now, with up to $5 million of forgiveness for hardship. This alternative one would result in an increase of about $5 a month over the already planned increase in 2023, and another increase of $13 a month over the already planned increase in 2033.
Are those dollars in, those are in today's dollars?
Yes. So those aren't insignificant increases. Like I said, this is just one funding scenario. The next most important step for the consultant that selects on this treatment plant project is to look at what the funding options are. So I was up in Spokane earlier today, meeting with ecology about funding options, and then we also are planning, there's an excellent infrastructure funding conference, Funding Infrastructure in Washington State coming up this October. And your... And your staff has already got the, the ball rolling in terms of having one-on-one meetings with all the major funding partners. So you can sit down and talk about some serious strategies on how we can identify grant funding, how we can use a different funding duties and leverage one source of funding to be a match for another to try and get as much funding as we can for this project. So the next steps are to submit our final facility plan to the department of ecology for approval. We have really minor comments that we, that we need to address. And then you're in the process of selecting consultant for the design phase at the treatment plant. The loan application for the design phase, as I mentioned, the window opened yesterday. The funding applications are due October 15th. And then finding funding options for the construction phase will be a really important task to try and lessen the burden for the taxpayers in the future. Some other tasks to begin looking at is land acquisition. So we need to build a large storage pond, so we need to identify the land needed for that storage pond. Then work on the design of the improvements, get them out to bid, select a contractor and hopefully update construct by end of 2023.
Questions for Mr. Peterson? Mr. Cleveland?
I was a little bit curious about, you, you mentioned the four alternatives. Number four, you said it was Class A to rapid infiltration basin. Just curious, and you mentioned, I think groundwater or, could you just describe that a little more?
Sure. So that alternative would involve treating the wastewater so that it would meet groundwater standards. And then basically constructing large ponds or drain fields to directly discharge the water into the shallow aquifer throughout the year. That's what that alternative would look like.
Okay. But that would involve, as you, opening, as you called it, that can of worms.
Correct.
And given that, you know, several of the committees and people involved have not really wanted to touch that, I mean, it's a little bit cheaper than the number, option number one, the expanded land treatment. Is it, you know, $5 million, is it a $5 million can of worms to just like, we'll just eat the cost? Or like, is there some value to maybe putting that back into the groundwater that would be offset by that?
Right. Well, I think ultimately, with, even with alternative one, the, the infrastructure that we would build as part of that wouldn't preclude you from going to reclamation in the future. There are things that we can design into it to make sure you're set up to reclaim water better in the future because regulations are always changing. The regulations might get more favorable. The state might figure out exactly how important this water rights issue is for reclamation projects. Really, it's a big deterrent to reclamation projects and I think now they're starting to realize that. So I think the big expense of this option is storage. And storage, in my opinion, never does that style. If you store the water, you're always, you're always going to have something you can use that water for. Of the, of the three, of the four alternatives, the one that I liked the best was the one of discharging it to the irrigation district. That was the least expensive of the options. But there are a lot of others to any of these circumstances in terms of developing an agreement with the irrigation district. One other minor, one other minor loophole was that irrigation district has some lands in the state of Oregon, so we weren't sure exactly how that would affect the regulations. But I think it's, it would be worthwhile to continue discussions with that irrigation district so that perhaps sometime in the future, they would be amenable to it and maybe you could work out an agreement because that would be another good, at least alternative discharge location for them.
Mr. Peterson and Ms. Nysel.
Couple of real quick questions. So the demands, the EPA supersede or trump water rights, is that correct?
That's a great question. I have the answer to it.
Okay. It's a catch 22 potentially.
Yeah. So, I mean, Paul can attest, we met at Spokane and we had a meeting and we had the, the treatment folks at ecology at one side of the table and we have the water rights folks at ecology on the other side of the table. And they were never able to come to any great rest of questions.
Okay. Another quick question. So the physical plant out there, the brick and mortar, and maybe that's not a significant cost. It seems that it's the right size, it's the stuff inside that is old. Is that, the building may have to be expanded and, and the brick and mortar, or what are your thoughts on that?
No, I think the brick and mortar pieces of the treatment facility mostly just need some rehabilitation. The real expensive part of the whole process will be building a new storage loop in and the pumping and piping to get it out to that storage. Also replacing the irrigation system that you have is, is one of the big expenses as well. But, you know, in terms of existing treatment facility, it's mostly going to be a lot of rehabilitation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Nysel.
I just kind of wanted to chime in to Miss Cleveland's question. It's not so much, I think, the cost of opening up the water rights can of worms as it is the time. It can stall you for many years and you end up with no permit and then you're open to legal liability potentially and you just can't ever, you just, they're stuck. So, and it's hard to put a, a dollar amount on that, but it just, you never get out. There's no place to pass go.
And one thing I want to point out, in terms of the cost of the four alternatives, for alternative one, just doing this interim stuff, where we're not, where we're not only being the discharge year round, but we're still discharging in the winter, this ends up being the least costly of all the alternatives by far. It's only if ecology comes back and says you can't discharge in the winter anymore that that alternative one then becomes more expensive.
Good point.
Quite a few questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson.
You're welcome.
It's now time to open the public meeting for addressing the College Place City Council. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on the wastewater treatment facility amendment, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Second time, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on the wastewater treatment facility, facility plan amendment, please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on the wastewater treatment plant, facility plan amendment, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing? It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Nysel. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The public meeting is closed. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Moving on to action items, Ms. Nysel, scan and toss policy.
Hi. So this is the policy that I talked to you about at the last meeting, which will enable, starting with the accounts payable process, to be destroyed and kept as in electronic format for the required retention period. As we get more scanners onboard and start the process of scanning, additional documents will expand that process, but right now, we're just going to work with doing the accounts payable portion of it because that's what's being scanned in as part of the regular job right now, so.
Questions for Ms. Nysel. Mr. Peterson?
Cautionary tale. Never assumed that was, what was scanned was actually scanned. So I don't know what the system is, I know, yeah, it's, it's always interesting to go in and do random samples and whatnot into the future of that. I mean, I'm just saying, as I sit here and think about the experience with that, it's, you find out that everything was inverted or something like that and just a random, yeah, random look at it to see if that is, that is clean. Because I saw, happened to keep the original documents for six years and I read through the detail. So always good to know that the first pass is good and, yeah.
Yeah. And the, the way our accounting processes with the, with the accounts payable right now, we're pretty solid on that because of the fact that she scans them in and they're sent out for approvals through the scanned image. So they have to have the, the scanned image has to be in there and good.
Very good.
So, yeah.
Uh, are there questions for Ms. Nysel? Is there a motion?
I will motion to adopt resolution 18-024, which sets forth the scan and toss procedure for city records.
Certainly. It's been moved by District Cleveland, seconded by Mr. Bobin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mayoral emergency powers. Mr. Booz is here in place of Chief Winter, who is off firefighting in some far-flung regard.
Welcome, Mr. Booz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm pinching for Chief Winter tonight. He's off with his management team in the northeastern part of the state. And I have the opportunity to introduce, summarize, and maybe answer some questions regarding the emergency powers. So we'll get started. This ordinance will establish emergency powers of the mayor, the city council, and the administrator in the event of a civil emergency. Recently, the city's leadership team went through a COOP plan, that's an operations plan. And as part of that, this emergency powers ordinance would be apparent to be necessary. Civil emergency would be defined as something such as a riot, unlawful assembly, insurrection, enemy attack, terrorist attack, sabotage, hostile action, or natural or human caused disaster. Something like a flood, fire, or storm, explosion, earthquake, those type of events. An emergency powers ordinance is needed in times of disaster and is a requirement of FEMA to receive disaster grant funding. This ordinance establishes a line of succession to serve as acting mayor in the event that the mayor is unable to perform their duty. This ordinance establishes which actions may be taken by the mayor or acting mayor in the event of civil emergencies. Some of these actions would include imposing curfews, ordering closure of businesses, closure of places, requesting state and federal assistance in combating the emergency, ordering medical facilities to provide emergency care to the injured, ordering the shut-off, restoration, or operation of utilities, other such orders that might be minimally necessary for preservation of a life and property. Ordinance also establishes which orders or actions may be taken by the mayor and/or city council in a civil emergency. Some of these would include ordering evacuation of populations or their placement, or other such items that might be necessary to protect life and property. This ordinance establishes which requests or consultations may be made by the mayor and/or city council during the civil emergency. And some of these might include such things as requesting the governor proclaim state emergency for the disaster. Consult with local, state, federal emergency management agencies regarding this disaster and others such requests that might be pertinent to life and property. Upon proclamation of a civil emergency by the mayor and/or the city council, and during the existence of that emergency only, the city administrative administrator would have the power to enter into contracts and incur obligations necessary to combat the disaster and protect the health and safety of the person. Any more questions? Any more questions around the ordinance?
Questions for Mr. Booz?
Yes.
Ms. Nysel.
When we put this into action, is it reported to the news?
It would be. Part of the action is that the mayor would be required to, or the acting mayor would be required to convey this through multiple means.
So the community would know.
Correct.
Seeing none, is there a motion? Ms. Nysel.
I move to adopt ordinance 18-017 establishing Chapter 2.62, emergency powers of mayor, city council, and city administrator into the College Place Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Ms. Nysel, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Nysel. Mr. Ristello, Pacific Power contract for Relight Washington.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Bill Quamons covered this pretty well in depth. This is a long day coming. We passed the Relight Washington contract with Transportation Improvement Board a long time ago. And this is the contract with Pacific Power, so they can start having the contractors go in and switch out all the lights. So if this body so chooses to allow us to pass the contract, we can get going on this and essentially get the money from TIB and pass it over to Pacific Power and then we'll have our lights.
Questions for Mr. Ristello.
I'm the motion to approve the street lighting agreement with Pacific Power.
Second.
It was in stereo, I don't know where. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ristello. Mr. Gordon, transportation project application authorizations and funding certifications.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I think I actually wrote the title for that agenda item, which I apologize. If you could show, here we go. Appreciate that. This is that time of year when we come to, with our handout, asking for money for transportation projects. So what I've done is I've really tried to lump a lot of our projects together and ask for two things. One is for authorization for council to go out for funding. And two, we have two applications already in place, ready to stand out if you authorize it, for funding, and they require funding certifications to make sure that we can do our part of the, the match funding. So just briefly, let's say, I think this is working. These particular projects, as cluster projects, were designed back in 2016. If you recall, earlier this year, we went out for funding through our local metropolitan planning organization, Forts and Federal Funds, and we did not receive those. This is the second application for our C Street project through the Transportation Improvement Board. We're hopeful we're going to get that funding. We found when they were doing their training around the state this year, that they had showcased C Street in their presentation. So we're, yeah, and so we're using.
It's not a good thing.
And so we, it's not a good thing, but it's a great thing. And so we're trying to replicate that photo in our application, just so they see that. So that's this project, that's a big one. And so again, we would like to build up the funding for that and we also like to make sure that you approve the funding certification for that. Those are all due, the TIB application is due Friday, so we're up against pretty tight timeframe. Dampson and Cedar Avenue are two other smaller local projects. They're not usually kind, the kinds of projects that we get state funding for, but with the Complete Streets program, we think we may be able to find some funding for Cedar Avenue project. Might spend kind of working on that as well and we're going to be putting out some applications for that. So we might be able to apply for all these projects, plus I think there's one more slide there down below on that same, on that same exhibit. Go back on the same exhibit. Yeah, there's two sheets on there. So, and we also learned that there's only two of us entities in South Washington, Southeast Washington, that are able to apply for arterial preservation program monies, ourselves and West Richland. So we thought that was a great opportunity to try and do some grind overlay in this area on both Land Purdy and Southeast Medway Boulevard. The challenge, of course, is this point right here. We're butting right up against SR 125. And so I've already talked to Washstop, they have given us their certificate notice in the agenda bill, that's one thing we needed. They say they're in concordance, so we can do this if we get the monies, but we'd have to be pretty careful about staging this part of the project. So that's another application that's out there. These roads are beginning to show cracks, you know, starting to have to try and heal them up with tar and so forth, so it's time. Anyway, that's kind of a brief overview. If you have any questions.
Questions for Mr. Gordon.
I'd move to approve resolution 18-025, authorizing applications for project funding for the C Street reconstruction project, AKA C Street project. The Northeast Cedar Avenue project, the Northeast Dampson Avenue project, and then and Lampertie Metal Brook grind and overlay project, and furthermore, certifying funding for Transportation Improvement Board, TIB, C Street, and the Lampertie Metal Brook grind and overlay projects grant applications.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Chief Tamaris, updated salary ordinance.
All right, good evening again. I am the proxy for our HR specialist, Sean Doring, who was on the officer vacation. And his position benefits the county department here as well. So I'm likely going to present this. So at the end of November, Mr. Detective Maidenhead will be retiring. And in the meantime, we would like to hire a special enforcement officer with an estimated start date of November 3rd, allowing a month or so. So that detective maybe can train this individual specifically on evidence collection, because this position will encompass a few things. It'll be code enforcement, it'll be evidence custodian, it will do some parking enforcement, and also it'll do some animal protection. So it'll be a loop-in of all kinds of different jobs. And part of this is to approve the ordinance for this position. And those ordinance and job description are also attached to the agenda bill. And Mr. Rizzatello and I looked at some comparables for salaries and we came up with basically about the middle of the road to resume this position.
Questions for Chief Tamaris? Ms. Selby.
So will we have access to detective coverage between November 30 and early 2019?
So the plan right now is to replace Detective Maidenhead's position in 2019. To, and what the thought would be is to hire his replacement, get someone through the academy, and then from our group of officers, select a detective from there. So not to pull, because our staffing is, we're finally getting our staffing to a point where we can actually cover shifts. So instead of pulling someone and falling behind again, we're trying to get someone hired, get them trained, then identify detective. Now, if there's an incident that occurs that we need a detective, whoever is the case officer for that investigation, we'll pull them from that road and allow them to spend more time doing that. And we'll also partner with Sheriff's Office of Walla Walla if we have a major crime. Of course, there's a major crimes unit at Tri-Cities that Walla Walla is also part of. So if there was a homicide or those already exceed our level of scope, so they would always already be brought in or something like that. So we think we have that covered. We have a contingency plan for that, but our intentions are, yes, to get a detective.
I approve the updated salary ordinance 18-018 to add the special enforcement officer.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen, seconded by Mr. Bobbin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Tamaris. Mr. Gordon, you're back on tap. Homestead Road, street cut.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Thank you, this is a request. We are, by our Street Cut Restoration Act, required to come to council if we're going to cut a relatively new street. In this case, it's a local street. In this case, it's Homestead Avenue, right along here. This is a little bit of an older area, most of this area is already developed out down in this area. And the reason we're coming to you for this, I want to kind of give you a little bit of background, is this development started back in 2008. And we had phase one, phase two, and then moved into phase three. But that portion of the phase two, we have a stormwater facility down here. You may be familiar with this. It was supposed to fill up and infiltrate, that means go into the ground, right? And disappear forever. Well, the problem is, and then if there's a high vent, it was supposed to spill over into the sweat lane down here from this area. Unfortunately, it didn't disappear forever, and it's been around forever now. And we can't seem to get rid of the water throughout part of most of the year. So if you recall, I mean, it was earlier, I can't recall, it was earlier this year, we signed an agreement with Homestead, saying they could continue development if they had identified the city against any claims from this property owner for water that was spilling over their property. I don't know if you recall that, okay? So one of the things we told them is they were going to have to fix this problem. And so they're back to the table and they have proposals for us in terms of fixing this problem. And that involves putting a large impoundment area up here for these other development, these other parts of the development, the other phases. It fills up and then it comes down through an underground line into this facility here. Then it gets pumped slightly upgraded to an existing stormwater facility where it flows out at what we call pre-development rates into Dome's Creek. So that's what they proposed, and we're open to that. And as a part of that, they're going to have to cut Homestead and put a couple of storm lines through that. So that's what this is about. And so we're approaching council to ask if you will give staff the authorization to grant that street cut as a part of this proposal for the stormwater.
Questions for Mr. Gordon? Ms. Selby.
How active is the homeowners association so far?
So far, currently, Hayden Homes controls the association. So we will not know exactly how active they will be until sometime after they're done with the development. We are looking at approving our next phase. And as a part of that, we're also looking at an agreement where they agree that this is not the final necessarily solution for the stormwater, that in fact this is an interim solution. If we see that it works out over the next few years, then we would come back and possibly bring it to council for approval.
Could we possibly see about, it's very common that homeowners associations start out with great vim and vigor, and after about 10 years, they completely disappear. So, and I worry, because this requires maintenance. If it was gravity flow, I wouldn't be so worried. So is there a way that we can ask for a bond or something so that if we have to take over the system? Because my understanding is if you give it to a homeowners association, we have to be the backstop, that we actually have some funding to do that?
There's a couple ways to approach it. One would be with a bond, and we can, we could look at that. We're looking at making sure that this goes in as a part of final plan and actually having a facility before we approve the next final plan phase. We'll see where that goes, but that's the plan. The other thing we could do is we have a stormwater utility that's coming online. And as a part of that, if we have to have special assessments, if they give up their responsibilities that they've agreed to and they're not performing them, in their CCRs, we can have irrevocable language that says basically that they agree that we can come in and charge them for that activity. So that's another alternative that we have.
But I think we need to look at a really robust plan because nine times out of 10, the city ends up taking it over eventually.
Yes, in fact, we just passed some language that...
Mr. Peterson.
Quick question, the guidelines for this, for the cutback, what is the size of the cutback on this as far as the asphalt on either side? It's...
I don't remember the exact, I think it's probably about eight feet. And then we've got another 10 feet, both sides, curb to curb.
Okay.
And that's requirement for what we call a no-cut policy. In other words, they're not supposed to really be cutting that. They have to come to you for approval because it's so early? It's still a young road?
Right.
Other questions? Is there a motion? Ms. Selby.
I, hold on a minute. I move that we authorize staff to approve street cut on Homestead Acres for the purposes of installing stormwater infrastructure.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peterson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thanks.
Mr. Hartwig, street surfacing, Southeast Broadway and Southwest Davis.
We do have some bad streets.
No. That's slander.
Overall, though, we have good streets. But two streets right now stand out. Broadway, which is pictured here from where you would anticipate that we would go right now from 12th Street to the end of bound, to the south side of Mountain View. You know, I know that everybody would like it more, but part of the problem is when you try to... Part of the problem is when you try to pave and do an overlay on a street that does not have curb to gutter, inevitably, that road is going to start falling apart, right? Within a few years on the edges and move in towards the middle. And you're going to be redoing it over and over and over again. Ideally, this street, to do a good job, we need curb to gutter. That's what holds the street together. But as a temporary measure, doing a two-inch overlay would be a good thing here. This road generates the traffic from Mountain View, Scenic View, and Sunny. And a lot of people come down that street and go up that street to get home or go to work. So that would be the first street. You got that up in picture. The other one is Davis, Southwest Davis, between 6th and 8th. This one is just as bad. It is a terrible street. This is from the old days of trans-state asphalt that used very poor rock. That, this was paved and within a year after the paving, the rock just disintegrated in that asphalt. And this one is the other one that we were proposing to do an overlay on. We went out and got two prices for the overlay and from Central Washington and Humbert Asphalt. And Central Washington was the low quote. And so I asked for $50,000, just in case of contingencies. And asphalt quantities, you're dealing with tonnage, and tonnage may vary a little bit, so your prices get hardy sap. So if you want to see this done, and I imagine you probably do, I understand a motion.
Mr. Cleveland.
I actually have a question here.
No motion?
I'll get there, but what would it cost to actually do this right? To have the gutters installed, to have the... What kind of like numbers are we looking at here?
We're looking at 120, a lineal foot. This doesn't have a proper base, so you'd be digging it all out. I'm making an assumption, and I don't know what that word means. But I'm assuming that we have right way. If we don't, then we couldn't do a proper road deal. But you're looking at excavating all that out, bringing up the rock, and you're looking at about $100 to $125 a foot, lineal foot.
And what's the stretch?
That. If you wanted to do the whole thing, you're looking at, that's probably about 1,200 feet.
That's getting spendy.
It's really expensive.
I'll just, let me just expand, just briefly. This is the problem with local roads. We get funding for your arterials and your minor collectors, but there is no money available for local roads. And I have a budget of $30,000 to maintain these. And then we have a little bit of money that is given by council to do some projects like this. So the critical thing here is trying to find money to maintain these roads, and it's really expensive.
So we have a bigger problem. But I would motion to authorize administration to execute contract with Central Washington Asphalt in the amount not to exceed $50,000 for paving on Southeast Broadway and Southwest Davis.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
I will contact Central Washington and tell them that the contract's been approved. I don't know exactly their timeframe right yet. Their, you know, Second Street and Walla Walla, so they're busy now.
Pave away, Mr. Hartwig. And moving right along, a contract with JUV for SR 125, College Avenue Crossing.
In coordination with that Southwest sewer conceptual land, part of it is getting across SR 125. Well, SR 125, we first heard that that was going to be redone in 2019. So we were in a hurry to get a design and be able to get this in. What we've now found is that it's delayed one more year. They're going to go out to bid in November of 19 for work to begin in 2020 to redo that highway. But we're, I heard that we can open cut. Alex here heard that we can open cut a lot of the work. But anyway, regardless, we'll figure that one out. We're hoping that we can open cut, because that's much cheaper. But anyway, we need a contract to design and to do the permitting and the construction engineering for getting the sleeve underneath the highway, because it's going to be more difficult, more expensive after that's redone. So we're asking for council to authorize, allow the mayor to execute a contract with JUV for the design and construction engineering of this crossing for sewer.
Questions for Mr. Hartwig? Ms. Selby.
Is this for design of open cut or boring design?
Open cut. Open cut.
So, and I assume, but I assume early on in the process, we would get that nailed down?
Yeah, I'm going to make a call in Washington.
Great.
Mr. Peterson.
I'd move to authorize the mayor to execute the contract with JUV for the design and construction engineering of the sewer crossing at SR 125 and College Avenue in the amount not to exceed $68,000.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Peterson, was that Ms. Sherman?
Yes, it was.
Seconded by Ms. Sherman, any further discussion?
Yeah, I had a question.
Mr. Cleveland.
Since we are potentially seemingly cutting or boring here, but is there anything else that we want to run through there if we cut that open?
Yes, well, we can't run water in that same trench, because water has to be a certain feet away from there. To do, we're going to end up with RH2, as part of the water project, will be doing a permit for placing of the water main there. We're going to be looking probably at a storm crossing there. And then as part of the sewer one, we're probably going to put in a sleeve or just an empty sleeve that we have access to if we need to or want to run communication at a future time. This permit is for the placement of that. When we actually go to place the sewer main in that sleeve, we got to get another permit.
So we're doing some forward thinking here?
We're planning on all the crossings that we're going to need for that intersection to happen before construction.
Any further questions? Is there a motion?
There is.
There was one.
Oh, that's, never mind. Memory's the second thing that goes.
What's the first?
I can't remember.
I knew it as soon as I asked.
So it's been moved and seconded, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rizzatello.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda bill goes over a subject matter that I presented at the previous council workshop. There is an opportunity. State Department of Commerce has a grant program that does a 50/50 match on solar projects. Likewise, Pacific Power has a program that pairs with that called the Blue Sky Program that covers the majority of the other side. If we wait until another year, we, the amount of rebate on the Pacific Power side thing actually goes down by 50%. So we have a narrow window of opportunity here where if we have McKinstry starting to dabble around doing investment grade awe that we can lock in and get that higher rate of return. Now, before we even start talking about whether the solar project makes sense or how much it would be, you have to do what's called an investment grade... it would be, you have to do what's called investment-grade audit first, and that goes into all of that, figuring out how much is, how much sun you're able to pull on the solar panels, and that would help by powering the new well that would go over there, as well as charging up the electrical grid over there. But yeah, we have a narrow window, because that grant opportunity for the Department of Commerce is this fall. I've talked with McKinstry, they believe they can get it done in time to do that. The Pacific Power Blue Sky Program, we have signed up saying that we're exploring this. I actually filed out the application to participate in that thing, that ended this week. So this is going to be a pretty quick turnaround here. The investment-grade audit, we only owe money on that if, let's say, a report comes back and it says that it's all good, it pencils out, but then for some reason, council doesn't want to do it, then that's where that $10,000 figure comes from. Otherwise, if they say, hey, the IGA shows that it wouldn't pencil out with energy savings, we will, McKinstry, nothing. Likewise, if they say, for instance, that the project would pencil out, and then we're getting grants every thousand, so we can actually cover that cost with the grants. So the only way you're actually expending out money is if it shows that it pencils out, and then we decline it. Timing this project now allows us to go after essentially two cycles of state grants with this project. The nice part on the state grant side of things is that McKinstry would do the writing of those grants, and that would be covered when this. The only part that I'd be covering is that Blue Sky application through Pacific Power.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello.
I can't ignore that you're trying to city administrator to enter the contract with K Street for investment. Grade audit services not to exceed $10,000.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rosatello, Walla Walla County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. This plan is adopted by agencies all across the county, and just spells out a game plan for essentially natural disasters or the frequency of natural disasters, stuff to the effect, you need a hazard mitigation plan, in essence, to give FEMA reimbursement. So the Walla Walla County Emergency Management Department, they ended up giving a grant to cover the update to this. It went through the update process, and now it's on all of the partner jurisdictions to essentially adopt this. So that is what you see before you today.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-026, adopting the Walla Walla County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. And last but not least, Mr. Rosatello, movies in the park policy.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is coming about just because we have the outdoor movie theater now that we obtained via the Pacific Power Foundation grant. Our Park Arbor and Recreation Board Advisory Group, they thought was prudent that we start to have some direction as far as what can be shown on the said screen. So they basically discussed this process, and this is what they came up with before you. It's a one-page document, please review. If you have any questions, let me know. The Park Arbor and Recreation Board, they voted to recommend this to city council, and they came up with this last month, so.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello.
I have one.
Yeah.
Movies that are prohibited.
Yeah.
Where are you going to find a movie?
What?
All those prohibited.
Yeah.
No religious, no excessive violence, no political, no sexual content. I mean, good luck.
Yep.
Well, you know, I think we've hit it on the park so far.
Yeah, we...
Well, no, it just, you know what I mean.
Well, no, I definitely agree with you. There is just a way to limit our liability, because while we've had great funders cover the movie rights, I will tell you, having had inflatable movie screen and Beaver then over there, we actually had a marijuana purveyor that wanted to show a movie relating to that. And because we did not have this on the books, we were essentially advised to do that, and that happened at a park outside of a public library. So, yeah, you learn your lessons, so.
You know where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I definitely understand.
So didn't figure us next Thursday?
Yeah, this Thursday.
Just, I mean, you can't get better than Princess Brian, the Lion King.
That's true.
Have my wife bring the doll, one of the actors. Any further actions filed or any discussion by the council?
We adjourned?
It's been moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
What was said?
Yeah, so, well, it's on there, but, well, they pretty much...
Oh, gosh.
What did he say?
He said, "So no apocalypse now."